I called to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for September fourteenth, twenty twenty one. At six P M. We're going to start by adjourning into an executive session. So the Gladstone City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to O R S one nine two point six six oh. Section two F as in Frank to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Recognized representatives of the news media and council authorized staff members may attend the executive session. All other persons must leave the room and are respectfully requested to do so now or get off the Zoom meeting. Members of the media are specifically directed not to report on the topics discussed and the deliberations that occur during the executive session. City councilors are similarly reminded not to discuss executive session topics and deliberations with any third party. This includes without limitation, family members, other appointed officials, for example, planning commission members, library advisory board members, et cetera. City staff and volunteers, members of the public and members of the media. The presence of the media while the city's legal council is discussing matters with the council is not intended to nor does it weigh the attorney client privilege that attaches to those communications and any related documentation. If a final decision on any matter is necessary, the council will make that decision when it is in a regular session. Thank you very much.
I am stopping the recording now.
Um, I called to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for September fourteenth, twenty twenty one at six thirty two P M. Good evening, everybody. For the governor's executive order twenty dash sixteen regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws. The city of Gladstone is abiding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic. The city council meeting will be conducted virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the city council, staff and the public all have access to this call. Public comment requests were accepted prior to noon today and were to include your topic and phone number. If folks become disruptive, we will mute and remove them from the video conference. If that fails to stop the disruption, we will recess the meeting and return within five minutes. If we are unable to continue, council will briefly meet off air to remove unfinished business to the next council agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes approval of the August tenth, twenty twenty one city council meeting minutes. Approval of the July bank balances, budget report for periods ending July thirty first, twenty twenty one. Approval of the July check register, legal costs on projects. Department head monthly reports for August twenty twenty one. An approval of the intergovernmental agreement, also referred to as an I G A between the city of Gladstone and Plaquemus County to complete the racial justice research project. Our regular meeting agenda includes public hearing to request a variance from the Gladstone Municipal Code, also referred to as the G M C. Chapter eight point one two noise control for private party at a personal residence. Resolution one two zero one. Formation of the Oak Lodge Water Services District to become a joint water and sanitary authority to include territory within the city of Gladstone. Report on the use of Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act funding, which is referred to as cares through Saint Vincent de Paul. Vendor agreement between the city of Gladstone and the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department, also referred to as the O H C S D for utility assistance. Business from the audience to discussion required to discuss requiring the name and address of those wishing to speak. And discussion regarding the Halloween event on Portland Avenue. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley.
Here.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy. Counselor Hartman.
Here.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Garlington.
Here.
Mayor Stimple.
Here. Could everyone stand for the flex please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any agenda additions or corrections?
I have none. Thank you, mayor.
All right. First item is the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or concerns? I don't see any. Would someone please make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Counselor Hartman and seconded by Counselor Alexander to approve the consent agenda. Do we have any additional questions, concerns or discussion? I don't see any. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote please?
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Hartman.
I.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, the consent agenda has passed. Um, any correspondence?
No, mayor, I have none. Thank you.
All right. So a couple of things before we start the regular agenda. First, for those folks that would like to speak, the deadline to accept comments was noon today. And as a reminder, we have, we allow three minutes for public comment. Second, as I do before every meeting, I would like to say a few words regarding the city council. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we would like personally, but have made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That doesn't mean our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decision. We start at the federal and state level, then filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter codes and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. We appreciate you taking the time to call in and participate in this process. We will have your phones muted until it is your time to speak. And if we're not able to mute your phone, please do so on your end. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging, and I hope everyone can help me do that. So the first item is eight, a public hearing to request a variance from the Gladstone Municipal Code, referred to as the G M C, chapter eight point one two, noise control for a private party at a personal residence. Staff.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and city council. What you have before you tonight is a request for a variance from the Gladstone Municipal Code regarding noise control measures. We don't get these requests very often, but we appreciate that this resident went through the proper process to ask for the variance. As you can see in your packet, the gentleman has provided a letter that states that he plans on having a Halloween party on Saturday, October thirtieth. He would like to do karaoke in his backyard until midnight instead of ten P M., which is what our code allows people to go into the quiet mode. So he submitted a letter to the city council asking for a two hour variance on this. He also notified his surrounding neighbors of this, and those signatures are in your packet. And he also invited you to his party if you would like to attend it. Additional step, the city also sent public hearing notices to the surrounding neighbors and offered them an opportunity to speak tonight if they had any concerns. The city did not receive anyone that wanted to speak on this. And so really what it is, is that it's a simple acknowledgement of his request. And if the city council wants to approve the variance, then this will allow him to go ahead and have his entertainment in his backyard until midnight on October thirtieth.
Right. Thank you. As you said, it's wonderful that they are taking the proper steps and notifying us because most people would not do that. So, um, Counselor Ripley, do you have any questions or concerns?
No.
Counselor Alexander.
None.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Hartman.
Um, my only question is, are we going, if so, if people start doing this well, I appreciate all the work that they did. Are we going to be getting permits like this moving forward administrative events? No, because the second part of staff recommendation is for you to direct us to bring this back to you and amend our city code so that these decisions can be made administratively. And so if you approve this tonight, we would recommend that we bring this chapter back to you in October. And through an ordinance, we would amend it so that the city council does not have to, um, approve these variants requests. Nor do our, you know, residents have to openly invite the entire community and have their information public. My only other concern for Mr. Hollingsworth is if he's ready for me to drop some dope beats by Dr. Dre. But, you know, we'll see about that. Other than that, I don't have any other comments.
Okay, Counselor Garlington.
Um, I just hope they have a good time and thank you for bringing this forward.
Counselor Tracy.
No questions.
Counselor Tracy.
No questions or concerns. I appreciate the work that they put into this. Obviously, the outreach to their neighbors works in their favor. Um, I just think this is the right way to do things, and I appreciate them as citizens that they chose this path as opposed to just winging it and waiting for the police to show up. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Um, any other questions or concerns before I ask for a motion? I don't see any hands. Would someone make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that the city council authorized the noise variance per eight point twelve point zero seven zero of the Gladstone Municipal Code to allow for full outdoor noise at eleven seventy Clayton Way in Gladstone until midnight, October thirtieth, twenty twenty one. I also moved that in this chapter eight point twelve point zero seven zero brought back for an amendment to allow these decisions to be made administratively instead of through the city council.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion was made by Counselor Alexander and seconded by Counselor Todd. Any further discussion? I don't see any. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garlington.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Alright.
Counselor Hartman.
I.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes, passed unanimously. All right. Next is item number nine, resolution one two zero one. Formation of Oak Lodge Water Services District to become a joint water and sanitary authority to include territory within the city of Gladstone. Staff.
So tonight you are considering the approval of a resolution to authorize Oak Lodge Water Services District to become a joint water and sanitary authority that will include territory within the city of Gladstone. This request is being made by Oak Lodge Water Services. So joining us tonight is Jason Rice, who's the Oak Lodge Water Services District Engineer. And two board members, Kevin Williams and Paul Gornick are also here in the audience. And they're available if the city council has any questions. I'm going to provide you a brief history and then I'm going to hand it over to our city attorney. And then we will hand it over to Jason with Oak Lodge Water Services. The city of Gladstone and Oak Lodge Water Services District each own and operate a water distribution system and a sanitary sewer collection system within their respective jurisdictions. Gladstone and Oak Lodge also each manage stormwater within their jurisdictions. And both entities are interested in updating roles and responsibilities for providing utility services and maintenance. For the past couple of years, the city of Gladstone have met with Oak Lodge Water Services District to discuss these items that need to be addressed in a new permanent agreement. We will continue to meet to come to a consensus on that permanent agreement. Separate from negotiating the agreement, Oak Lodge Water District approached the city to request the city approve Oak Lodge forming a joint water and sanitary authority, which includes portions of the city's jurisdiction. It does require approval from the Gladstone governing body. Oak Lodge is currently formed as a special district under Oregon law. And I'm going to have city attorney Jacobs explain to you what the difference between being a district and authority is.
Mayor, members of the council, for the record, Chad Jacobs from the city attorney's office. As city administrator Betts was just explaining, the proposal before you tonight is to consent to Oak Lodge of transforming itself from a district into an authority. And this is just the state statutes under which they are formed, which provides them authorization to operate. For the most part, the differences between a district and authority are identical. They both have very similar powers and authorities to provide the types of services, water and sanitary sewer in this particular case. The, the major difference is, uh, well, two things. One is that before they can form an authority with territory that includes the city, you all need to consent to that. And so that's the issue before you tonight. You know, do you consent to them trying to make this transformation? The second issue, just that's outlined in the staff memo, is, you know, the major change that would occur here is that if Oak Lodge, um, becomes an authority, it places some limitations on the city's ability to withdraw territory from Oak Lodge in order to have the city directly provide those services. Um, currently, as a district, the state law provides the city with authority to withdraw territory from the district if it ever wants to provide services to that territory. If we consent and they become an authority, we would no longer have that authority to do so.
Thank you, Chad. Okay, I think now we'll go ahead and bring in Jason to show his brief PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, hi. I'm going to try to share my screen here, make sure I've got the right one up. Can you all see, uh, the presentation there?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Hello, Mayor Sample and fellow counselors. Uh, as city administrator Betts mentioned, my name is Jason Rice. I'm the technical services director of Oak Lodge Water Services District. Uh, first, I'd like to thank you for your consideration of the resolution to support our effort uh, to change our governance structure of an, of a district to an authority. Uh, this was discussed at the time of consolidation of the water and sewer districts back in two thousand and sixteen. But we deferred for the sake of simplicity, uh, this step. Uh, recently, citizens in the district have asked our board to consider this change in governance, and that's why we're here before you now. Uh, I just wanted to say before I get going that we value our relationship with Gladstone and, and Milwaukee. Uh, we have mutual interests in our borders. Where topography drives which service provider can best serve those customers, and I'll get into that a little bit more here in a second. So, uh, just tonight, I wanted to just really quickly just mention, um, I'm going to introduce, you know, the, our goal of becoming an authority, and then I'll just kind of summarize what that means to the city and its residents. And then I also just offer myself, and I believe we have a few board members on the line that can, uh, answer questions as well if we'd like. So I'll say our top priority, like the city of Gladstone, is providing reliable services. In our case, water sewer and watershed protection services. Um, you know, as an authority, we'll better be able to protect our customers' investments and aid in long-term planning. So what we're talking about there is we're currently, we've, we've just recently wrapped up a water master plan, uh, which identified approximately, you know, one point five million dollars in investments throughout our district. Uh, one point five million per year for the next thirty years, sorry. Um, and in calculating those investments and how we calculate our rates and how they're spread out over our customers, we'll better be able to predict our rates and try to, uh, flatten out those rate increases over time with better prediction of what our future capital needs are. Um, continuing, continuity, continuity is essential to ensure consistent planning and to help address climate change and other environmental protections is something that's very important to us. And then we believe becoming an authority will benefit residents under any governance option. And what we're talking about there really is that some of you might know that there is a, um, a bit of a study afoot to analyze our district's area and becoming either its own standalone city. Uh, but they're also analyzing what it might mean for this area to become either a part of Milwaukee and or part of Gladstone. Um, but by us sort of, you know, walking through these steps of predicting future capital needs and investing in our community, uh, you know, the same rate payers that are currently paying for, let's say, our sewer treatment bond that we, uh, were kind of close to paying off. Um, it better helps us, you know, apply those capital costs to the people that are receiving the benefit. So the area that we're really talking about here, and I appreciate Clackamas County pulling this map together for us. Uh, but what this map is really showing in, in the gray is your current city limit boundaries. And then this blue line here is our district's boundaries. And the hatch line is your current urban growth management area. So this is the area in which you could annex into. And so you see this hatched area is really the overlap of our district and your U G M A. And the point here really is to mention that everybody within that hatched area is already being served by either one of us. Um, in some cases, we have properties that are within your city being served by our sewer treatment plant for, uh, you know, treatment services. We also then also have water customers, and there are these varying areas in which we are currently, well, we currently have an agreement to serve in different ways, but, um, we are working with Jackie really closely trying to pull together, uh, an updated I G A, a little bit more specific to current, uh, current needs. So I guess the point really to mention here is, is that as the city, uh, either chooses or not to annex further into this hatched area, the point is that these customers are already served and probably most likely served in the best way that they can. So I'm mentioning there is sort of, you know, those of you that know how sewer systems work, most likely we would want them to flow via gravity, fewer pumps equals less maintenance, lower rates. So we believe that they're already, uh, being served in the best way that they can be. So we're really just asking, uh, to keep and maintain existing, our existing boundary and make no changes to who's serving whom. But we also understand that this is something that works great for us having such a good partnership in that there are cases that do pop up. Um, and I'll just use a quick example. As we were discussing who best to serve which water customers, uh, this is back when Jim Wyatt was working for the city. Uh, the city has a water line, a, a smaller water line, a kind of a upper end of a pressure zone in which some of your customers had been saying that their water pressure was low. In that same street, the district, our district has a water line that could already serve those customers. And rather than the city making an investment, either pump and to create higher pressures and install a new larger main, we talked about, well, maybe it makes sense in this case for the city or for the district to be the service provider, even though they are residents of the city of Gladstone. And there are other cases where in reverse, it works towards the, the city's benefit of serving those services. So I just think it's great that we're able to have these conversations, work through them, talk about how best these customers are being served and try to keep both of our rates as low as we possibly can. Uh, next steps, presuming that, uh, the city council approves this resolution tonight, we'll be approaching the county board to initiate themselves a formation of an authority, which can be done pursuant to O R S. And that's pretty much it. Um, but I wanted to make sure that I was able to answer any questions that, uh, the council might have.
Thank you, Jason. I think our final piece from a staff perspective was to bring in our public acting, our acting public works director, Darren Caniparoli, to let him know if he had, let you know if he has any concerns about what's being asked tonight.
Thanks, Jackie. Yeah, there's really, with, with the way the boundaries are set up and, uh, like Jason had mentioned with gravity fed, uh, sewer lines and things like that, there's really not much of an option for us, even if we annex in all that property to be able to treat the sanitary sewer there. Um, so when it comes to the sanitary side of things, everything is, is pretty much kind of a no brainer. On the water side, there are some customers that could, uh, trickle back and forth, uh, depending on what it's going to take to be able to make those either Gladstone customers or, or Lodge customers. But realistically, they're already serving that area, and there's really not much benefit for the city of Gladstone to, uh, to move into that area to serve that area if we were to annex that in.
Hey, Jackie.
I think that's all that we had to present to you. If there's any questions, um, we have many resources to answer those for you.
All right. I'll start with Counselor Ripley. Any questions or concerns?
Um, I think I have one question. Um, if this is such a, a great thing, why is it being done right now, not a year ago, five years ago, ten years ago? What, what's changed that has also made this the, the next best thing?
Yeah, I think, yeah, like I mentioned earlier, it's, um, it was sort of a, a timing. And, and the way that we were having the conversation with the board, the two boards at the time, we were having joint board meetings. And for the sake of simplicity during the process, we thought consolidating two districts and then also becoming an authority and blending those two processes together uh, would have been much more difficult to explain to our rate payers and, uh, work through than doing it in two separate processes. So we're feeling like, you know, now that we're consolidated, people are understanding, you know, what that all meant and the changes that that brought with it. Um, and then also this sort of this authority idea is really, you know, we're having a meeting today discussing the steps and what sorts of things are going to need to happen over the next year or so. And, and really, we're, if we do this right, uh, and the county does do it, uh, the way that we've sort of requested or will be requesting, I'm not sure our rate payers will really notice a difference. It's not like we're changing our rate structures or anything like that. It's just, you know, our title, we're going to keep the same logo. It's, you know, we don't have district on our logo. Uh, so we're really just thinking this was like the cleanest and easiest way to communicate it to our public.
All right, Counselor Alexander.
I just want to confirm that there won't be any changes to the service any of us get. Is that correct?
No, no, not unless, like I mentioned, you know, if Darren calls me one day and says, hey, I found this property, you know, it looks like we or you might better serve it. We like having those conversations and working with you guys. I mean, we're going to want to do what's best for the customer, really. So, but today, no, no changes that we're aware of. We're really just talking about our name.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Todd.
Um, I have nothing right now. Thank you.
Counselor Hartman.
No questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Counselor Garlington.
Is this a single read or a double read?
This is a resolution, so it is a single read.
I don't know. I just feel real funny about it. If, if I found out that my water rights were kind of being moved over and I didn't know about it, I, I think I'd be, as a homeowner, I might be a little bit angry. And I don't want people being angry at us because we didn't call them or something. I don't, I don't know. It just feels a little, it's not that it feels fishy. I understand everything's on the up and up. I just feel like the people who own homes with a zip code in our city should know what we're doing before we do it.
Chad, could you explain what the process is? Because this isn't the end. There's other opportunities for public to be notified and we, is that correct?
Correct. Yes, there'll be a public hearing process that will take place through the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners at a minimum. There, there is an option for them to, uh, choose to put it out to a vote. It stretches out the timing and how we would be communicating this. Uh, our hope is, is that just for the sake of, you know, staff's time and all of the other goals we're trying to achieve at the same time, we're hoping that the county commissioners will use their authority to, uh, hold a public hearing process and, um, obviously notice the public. Um, but here are the public's concerns and weigh that in on their decision.
But at that time, we've already voted to go.
Uh, the way I'm sort of looking at it is you're, you've, uh, you've voted to support us in our, uh, our pursuit of it. You're not approving the, uh, the change to an authority. You're not approving the uh, the change to an authority, but you're showing your support for it.
Okay. I mean, I hear what you, I'm just going to say I hear what you're saying. Thank you.
All right, Council Tracy.
Could we have the public works director, uh, again, kind of explain how this water and sewer system works for our city? Cause I I think Counselor Gerlington um, isn't off base here. Uh, I just don't think we have a a real good understanding on the council about how this works, how this, our water system works. Fact that we co-own a water plant with um, this this authority or this agency. Um, so can we have the public works director explain a little more about why we have these broken up water systems and why Oak Lodge provides services to some of our citizens, please?
Sure. So, I mean, the the boundary that we currently have, the residents that are within our boundary, there are a handful of customers that are currently served by Oak Lodge um, Water Services. And anything that's annexed and new would still be covered by the Oak Lodge Water Services. When it comes to the the sanitary side of things, the sanitary lines and everything with the way that they flow, the only way that we could treat any of that sewage would be to build a sewer treatment plant. There's not space in that basin to be able to do that. There's not funding available to be able to do that. So when it comes to the sanitary side of things, it it really, there is no other option for the city than to go with Oak Lodge when it comes to that. On the water side of things, there are, there are a few pockets within Oak Lodge District that the city, if we were to annex in the new properties, would be able to possibly serve. But it it really depends on, it's kind of a hit and miss as to where those areas would be.
And I'm sorry to interrupt. Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Jason.
Oh, I just, one, one thing we don't talk much about because it is, we are sort of um, unique in the way that we serve our watershed protection program. Um, because as you uh, annex territory in the Clackamas County, you're you're taking with it rights of way that, you know, that contain the street and the stormwater system. And so the way we've treated watershed protection in the past is that as you annex, uh, we would take off of our rolls watershed protection fees. So these customers aren't double billed. Because the way we take care of our, uh, they're not even really our catch basins. We have an M O U with Clackamas County to to clean their catch basins and zones. So when you started your watershed protection fee, I got a call from Jim and he said, how are we going to do this? We ended up just basically going into our utility billing system and removing our fee from your customers. And so that your customers could then pay you directly and you provide those services. So as you do annex, that is one difference in the way that we're providing services. It's either you're providing it to those new customers or we're providing it to the residents of Clackamas County. So sorry, I didn't go into a lot of detail there.
No, that's good. I think we need some of the details. So let's talk a little bit about rate review. So we're gonna, we're representing citizens who are going to be paying um, their water and sewer, for their water and sewer services under um, this new authority, right? So you guys will still have a rate review structure, just like you have had, I think, all along, right? You're not, you don't go to your citizens and all of a sudden, it's, you know, uh, a fifty percent increase in water and sewer services fees, right? So could you explain a little bit about the rate review process so that we have some understanding about the fact that you, that these citizens will still go under rate review? Just as they would under any other water authority or water sewer sewer services authority.
Yeah, certainly. So the way that our district uh, reviews its rates, and this, this is great because it really does key back to the topic of, you know, predicting future rate increases and keeping rate increases at a, you know, sort of a sustainable level that's, you know, palatable for the customers. Uh, we are trying to always avoid these large rate increases. So we are working on sort of a holistic all all inclusive, three uh, utility model where we're looking at not just one one utility, we're looking at all three and how they might change over time. And so if we can even those bumps out, that is very much a goal of our board. Um, but the way that we do review our rates is um, going back to even January, staff starts preparing a budget. You know, we're walking through the budget process with uh, the budget committee and our board. And with that process, it creates a rate and that over the fa- the past two years, I think, I think a year ago or two years ago, we did like half a percent. And then last year, I don't think we even increased at all, but um, we've been trying to sort of stay ahead of this COVID issue and and people not quite having as many jobs or as much pay as they might have had before. But um, as we work their way through the budget and as the budget committee approves sort of what we're asking for, it creates a other, uh, you know, a zero percent rate increase or uh, or an increase. And with that comes um, our responsibility to notice our public within time, have public hearing before our board is even adopting our budget. So that's, that's all sort of baked into our budget process and we have to notice every single one of our customers of a rate increase when we go for them.
So my final question to you, Jason, will be, um, do you have ca- any capital improvements, larger capital improvement projects on the books? Or let's say on the five-year time horizon, there are significant large capital improvement projects such as, you know, large conveying systems, large uplift systems or lift stations. Is anything really in play right now that that you all are talking about, you know, with your customers and with your board? Um, let's just, let's say two to three years. Let's just do a two to three year window.
Yeah, so I have a, uh, I'm responsible for creating the district's uh, six-year capital improvement plan. And so it gets built into the forecast model with our finance director. Um, but yes, we have approximately one point four million dollars in water improvements over the next six years. We've sort of tried to balance that out. So one point four per year for the next six years, really the next thirty years, because we just finished our water master plan. We are underway on our sewer master plan. What's interesting about that is um, the last sewer master plan, we had done very much focused on our treatment plants. And bringing it up to a standard in which met our permit. Uh, from what I understand, if you go far enough back, we were constantly violating a permit and we needed to make large investments. So the district took it upon themselves to invest, I believe it was close to sixty million dollars where it was under a bond um, that were I think there's about ten years left to paying off that bond. But we didn't have a lot of information about our sewer collection system. So one of the recommendations was to go off and video inspect and clean all of these lines, collect this data and then use it as a tool to inform the next master plan. So we've since done that. Uh, we just recently actually T B'd and cleaned all of your your system, which ends up flowing into ours. So we have that information. And I'm working with Darren and Jackie to come up with cost estimates as to what the improvements might be in that area. Uh, or at least the maintenance. Um, but we're very much expecting uh, that our our at least the conversation will start in that we probably will find improvements that need to take place within our collection system that we didn't know about before. Um, so we are probably expecting that we'll be making large investments in our collection system as well as our treatment plan. You might think that we have this brand new treatment plant, we just spent all this money, but that stuff ages very quickly. You know, we're already that was twenty twelve, so we're ten years in and we're already starting to see some improvements needing to be made at our treatment plant. So I very much expect that the the rate at which we're in investing in our sewer system will also grow up, but that will be its own public process. We'll have to figure out what that capital list looks like over the next thirty years. And then mesh it up with what we're doing with water and have a conversation with the board about how uh, how much we're really asking our rate payers to pay any given year.
Thank you for all that. It was necessary, I think, to go through that because I I it's understanding your your rate review process, the fact that you probably, uh, the district is at least over the years has improved its infrastructure. Our Gladstone citizens, uh, you know, two years, three years ago, uh, saw a a a very steep increase. And it would have been even steeper still had they not chosen the option. They were given the option to do that and they chose an option for a rate increase. But that was because we had a failing infrastructure, still have a failing infrastructure and playing catch up. The district, in my understanding, has done a fairly good job in maintaining and doing its R and R over the years to to maintain uh, the efficacy of the system. So I I just want to make sure that we're realizing into to Counselor Gerlington's point that we're not just saying, yes, go get this bi- bigger grasp of authority and then all of a sudden our rate payers, our citizens or your rate payers, our citizens are going to see these uh, these large increases in the rates.
If, you know, I won't say large increases, our board focuses very closely on balancing that out. Um, and it is, it's like that Band-Aid. We talked about just give people the information that's out there, show them the facts and then, and really people will understand and want to invest. Because the more you push those investments into the future, you know, the dollar doesn't go as far, that there's more repairs even yet to be made. Um, but we're trying to look a- ahead far enough to balance out those peaks and you know, being an authority and having that surety that we're, you know, we're not gonna, we're not going to shrink over time. We can really start to look at our rates and make sure that our rate payers are are, you know, are paying their fair share, but paying as little as possible. I mean, that might be a goal of ours, right? So.
That's a goo- good goal to have. All right, I'm I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I have a question. You've mentioned the board a couple of times and I'd like to know what the makeup of the board is. Where's the representation coming from? Is it elected board? Is it appointed board? Is it paid unpaid? What's the makeup?
It is a an elected board of five members. I I believe two are watching right now, just not in the room. Um. But yeah, we have a board president. They're they're on three, three are on an elected term. You know, we, we have our elections on odd years in May, so um, we have a, you know, three board members come up for reelection or, you know, or um, they can choose to not, but we've had a pretty consistent board. Uh, which makes it nice to, uh, you know, you know, we have good relationships. I believe that uh, they're all moving us in the right direction. Uh, I, everything's working quite well right now. Um, but that that's sort of our structure.
So is, are the positions tied to service areas? For instance, Gladstone would have a represent, representative of Lodge Incorporated would have a representative, or is it just random throughout the district?
They all share the entire district. Uh, once a year, we review who our uh, sort of liaisons are to different committees. So um, you might have, you know, seen one at C four. Um, but we have a couple that attend both of our two neighborhood C P Os, Jennings Lodge and the Oak Grove Community Council. Both have uh, attendees from our board. Um, we have the spreadsheet that tracks who goes to what meeting and who the backups are, but but really in the end, they're all serving the entire area. There aren't any zones.
Okay. Um, any other questions? Council Ripley, I saw your hand go up earlier.
Um, I have two things. I think that when Counselor Tracy was asked, was asking Darren a question about why these boundaries. I was in debt, I was anticipating a different answer and I'm not sure if he didn't answer it right or if I heard it right. Um, but the answer that that I thought sounded better would be why are, why are boundaries, you're kind of all mixed together on the edges. If we go back further in Gladstone's history and we didn't have all the houses, you built your wire lines out so far, you build them out so far, you build them out so far. As Milwaukee encroached on Gladstone, there was just little pockets and it kind of did a little zipper thing going on. So we have areas that it's, I think it would be more accurate to say it was the older boundary lines is why we have the goofy the goofy lines. The other thing I had, um, a question for Jason. Um, I really don't like the name authority, but if that's that's my own little thoughts, but does, but does by calling this an authority, does it open you up for federal grants? That's going to help bring money into this area to repair some of this infrastructure?
It, well, so so the first point, um, you know, our logo, actually, we'll just say water, Oak Lodge Water Services. It it already currently, I think I had it on my PowerPoint on the first slide, but um, I internally, I don't think we'll very often attach authority. I I think I agree with you. It's, you know, it can be conceived as uh, differently than we'd like it to. But um, back to the grant process, we're currently we would be available, uh, or um, federal grants would be available. But however, recently, we just discovered that uh, there was a brick grant that popped up a few years ago and we're working on getting an intertie with C R W, Cockmas River Water. And we thought, oh, this would be a great opportunity for us to go after a grant and really talk about how the region could be intertwined better with water. Um, however, we discovered that um, the district used to be covered under an umbrella. Uh, there was a hazard uh, mitigation plan that the county had. And they received a letter from the federal government saying that that they interpreted that we couldn't be underneath that umbrella. So they they essentially dropped special districts. And we didn't realize that this happened in like twenty sixteen. Um, we've since learned that the federal government is saying, no, 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 that wasn't true. You could be underneath the county's umbrella. But we're sort of starting to look at what might be our fastest route to getting back into that area. So just recently, um, this is just almost, I want to say even last week, we decided as a management group, we were gonna work towards building that plan for ourselves and try to get it passed as fast as possible so that we could be eligible for federal grants. Um, and it isn't always that those federal grants require that document to exist, but more often than not, they're shifting and trying to get they're sort of thinking about it in terms of cities, uh, providing uh, services during uh, natural disasters and emergencies. And they wanted to make cities where uh, sure cities were prepared for that. We're sort of again, unique in that we're serving an area in which looks like a city, but the county really might be their their go-to in the case of a a, you know, a flood or a natural disaster. So we're going to have to figure out how that works with the county. But get that document passed so that we can point to it when we apply for federal grants. And it is something our board is interested in doing in the future. So we, we're working on that.
That was the longest yes I've ever heard.
Sorry.
But you gave, you you explained a lot more and that's important. Thank you.
Um, any other questions? I don't see any. Would someone like to make a motion then?
I do.
Hold on, Council Garlandton.
Can we talk to Chad one more time?
Sure. Go ahead.
Oh, um, so my, uh, while I hear what everybody is saying, I I have this thing in the back of my head that says, are we going to have to ask for permission? Are we, should we ask for permission or are we going to have to ask for forgiveness? From the the people who live in this gray slashed area. And my question for Chad is if we vote yes on this, while I believe it's probably a very good idea, I am sure it's a good idea. If we vote yes on this, there's no going back for the people who live in these community, in in these homes that live in the Gladstone city limits.
So not entirely. So a- as what, as Jason was explaining, this is really a two-step process. The first step is that the city has to consent to the territory with, that's within city limits, being included within the authority. Once any cities, including Milwaukee, consent to that, then the, then the district can go to the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners with a petition to form the authority. Um, and it's that phase where the the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners will make a decision. So that's the first step. Yes, there's no going back. Once the city consents, we don't get to change our mind and say, never mind, we're withdrawing our consent. But that doesn't mean that the authority is automatically formed, because the Clackamas County Board of Commissioner still has to make a decision to approve it. So at that point in time, it could go back and and they could say, no, what's not going to happen, we're not going to do it. And the the Oak Lodge would remain a district instead of being an authority. So a- again, as Ra- as Council Rip would say, that's a a long-winded way of saying yes and no. But um, the answer is, yes, there's no going back for the city. But no, there is still going back in the ultimate decision because it go, will go before the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. Does that make sense?
Yes. So again, while I understand that this is something that is probably a really good thing, I have been on the side of being a homeowner who has not been informed before something that's directly related to my property has been done. So I'm I'm a little bit concerned about that. And while I understand that they will be um, notified, it doesn't sound to me like they have been notified. That's all.
All right, any more questions? I don't see anybody. Would somebody make a motion, please? I don't see anybody. Would somebody make a motion, please? Somebody? All right, I guess nobody's gonna make a motion then.
Hey, I'm here. I'm going to. Just give me a moment, please.
Well, apparently we're having problems with half of our building, but we've been able to transfer Tammy Bannick into her office. So she can record and manage the meeting from her office. Hopefully there won't be any glitches. We do have IT coming in, but I think we could probably go ahead and continue. Um, there may be another glitch when Robert gets here. Hopefully not. Wait till everybody gets up. Jason, did you know if Paul has something that's pertinent to our discussion? Cause I'm afraid if we try and pull him in, it may mess things up again.
Yeah, I, I, I just spoke with him on the phone. Um, there was, was one more point he wanted to, to make and I can do it for him.
Yes, please.
Okay, but you'll let me know when we're all back up online and everything.
We should be, we should be recording right now and I believe we are online. We are hoping we're back online, yes.
Do we want me to give the power of the meeting to somebody on the screen here or?
Um, we're doing, what is, what do you want him to do, Tammy?
I should be able to, you should, I should, should still be the host and I will, I can't move you back as. Okay.
Oh, it does say you're host on my screen now.
Yes.
Yeah, so I just didn't wanna, when we're done here, I didn't wanna.
No, we should be good. Thank you for your patience.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the point that, uh, our board member was Paul was gonna make was this, does that, there is an alternative for the district. Uh, it, it costs us, us, you, your, your staff a little bit more work. But if, if the district were to redraw its boundaries to not include any parts of the city of Gladstone. We wouldn't need this resolution from the board tonight, or the council tonight, sorry. Um, but it would, it would cause us to have to, or want to speed up the process by which we get that IGA updated. And how we're providing services near our borders. So there's an option. We, our preference was just to approach you with our existing boundary and, and keep going the way that we were going and serve customers, the way that we were serving them. And to Counselor Garland's point, uh, you know, our, those customers of yours, as a product of this, won't. Probably even notice or even, uh, they won't notice a rate increase, they won't notice a change in service. They're gonna be communicated with the exact same way that they already were. So I just didn't want there to be a fear of some rights being lost by the customer. Um, they're still getting the, the good water that we're all serving them. The sewer is still going to the same treatment plant. We're still trying to strive to keep our rates low. Um, it isn't that we were trying to, to sort of hide this from, from our, our customers. It was really, you know, there won't be a change, so. Uh, but those are the two points that we were talking about or that, uh, our board member Cornet was gonna reference.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion on the table. It's been made by Counselor Tracy and seconded by Counselor Ripley. Do we have any further discussion? I don't see any hands. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Tracy.
Hi.
Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Garland.
No.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, Resolution 1201 has passed. Thank you. So are we still okay, Tammy?
I believe we're still going.
Okay, next item is number 10, report on the use of coronavirus aid relief and economic security act funding. Also referred to as CARES through Saint Vincent de Paul staff.
Thank you, Mayor City Council. This is a report that we wanted to present back to you to show how. Some of the Corona's funding that the city received this past year has helped Gladstone residents. And so Kathy Brucker, our finance consultant, has put together this staff report. I'll have her summarize the benefits and as you will see in your city council packet, there is quite a bit more detail that Saint Vincent de Paul provided. So with that, Kathy, would you like to summarize the report?
Absolutely, thank you. And as was previously reported, the city received over 383,000 in CARES funding. And we utilized every penny available to help offset the ramifications of the COVID impacts to our budget. One of the most successful programs was the Gladstone COVID Assistance Program, partnering with the Society of Saint Vincent de Paul. To assist Gladstone residents separate, excuse me, suffering from job loss, economic distress and other COVID-related impacts. 69,000 was spent to assist 67 families with a variety of needs. Food, utility bills and rent for an average of $905 per family. The enclosed report highlights the qualification process, demographics and the specific needs for the applicants. Our utility staff and the society did an outstanding job of promoting the program and working together to identify persons of need. And if approved in the future, we would like to see about forming another partnership with Saint Vincent de Paul. In, um, in order to continue this same type of program under the American Rescue Plan funding. When we make a final decision on how that will be utilized. So I hope you had a chance to review the reports as they detail the public benefit very well. With that, or is there any questions I can answer about the program?
Counselor Ripley, any questions?
Don't have any questions.
Counsel Alexander.
None, that was a great job.
Counselor Todd.
No, thank you.
Counselor Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do have some questions. Um, how much exactly was allocated to this program of the 383,000? Like how much were we willing to spend?
Um, we were willing to spend up to 70,000. We spent 69,000.
Okay, and is that just because we had confirmed that we needed the other 313,000 for other things?
It was well-used.
No, I know. When I, my initial thought is just like, I'm sure we could have utilized more. Um, as a city that has a pretty high poverty rates and it, you know, COVID affected many of us. Um, and I'm sure that the qualifications weren't decided by anyone here or Saint Vincent's. Um, but I just want us to make sure if we do move forward with partnering with them again, that we do reflect on the data that they gave us. On, on making sure that, um, we did the best possible community outreach. Because it does concern me seeing that the 67 to 78 range had such a low, you know, uh, you know, chart on there. You know, are we making sure we're reaching our seniors by providing them with like personal outreach rather than what we did? You know, maybe they don't have social media. You know, it, it concerns me that our military veterans had such a small graph as well. That took part of this program. So I just personally want us, hopefully us all to reflect on. You know, did we do the best possible job reaching those that need, needed this money? You know, and I know that we almost used it all. Um, but I just want us to make sure we reflect, because this is great data to have when it comes to these funds. To making sure we're targeting the most marginalized people and, and making sure that they get the help that they need. And that's really, really only my, my comment there.
If I may add one other thing with the CARES Act, there were definite restrictions on who could benefit from it. And so we really tried to ensure that we were reaching those people that would qualify. Um, it was, you know, it, they had to suffer from definite COVID impact and very specifically. With the ARPA money, we should have a little bit more, um, uh, you know, less limitations. On what we can, uh, what we can use it for. So we're hoping that, yes, we will be able to continue to.
Great, that's great to hear. That's awesome to hear. And, and thank you. I don't, you know, I, I know you guys did a great job. I just wanna make sure that, that we are paying attention to, to the data that's provided. So thank you so much.
Counselor Garland.
Uh, I don't have, I just would like to say that, uh, along with Counselor Hartman, I was really impressed at the data and how we got to see it so clearly. And, uh, where the money went, that was all very clear to us. So thank you for doing all of that.
Absolutely.
Counselor Tracy.
Um, no questions. I think, um, I, the reports seems very thorough. I think we administered this as best as we could. 69,000 out of 7, 70,000, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Nope, no other questions. Thank you for the report.
All right, you aren't asking for a motion or anything, but you will let us know on the ARPA funds, how you wanna use it for a similar program. Is that correct?
Yes, when we have our, um, stat, or excuse me, the work session on that.
Do we have final regulations on how that money's to be used? Have they finally released it?
Uh, they have the interim rules. We have not seen a revision to the interim rules yet. So we just keep watching for them.
And there, it's a very large document from what I understand.
It is.
Okay, well, thank you very much on that one. Um, next is item 11, vendor agreement between the City of Gladstone and the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department. Referred to as the OHCSD or Utility Assistance Staff.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is a great segue into now, how will we be spending some of the American Rescue Plan funds? The city will have a work session later this month on potential uses for the money that the City of Gladstone received. This item before you is ARPA funding that the state has received. And this is an opportunity, again, for the City of Gladstone to try to help its citizens through low-income utility assistance. And so I will briefly have Kathy talk to you about this program.
Um, as Jackie was saying, during the past 18 months, we have been attempting to provide assistance referrals to viable programs. To our residents that have been impacted. This agreement will allow the city to work with the Oregon Housing and Community Services through Clackamas County Social Services. To identify and refer residents in need of utility assistance on water and sewer bills. The state is funding this program through two federal grant sources, one of them being the American Rescue Plan. And, uh, it is on a temporary basis, but the state does hope to make it a permanent sort, source of assistance in the future. Clackamas County has been allocated a total of 610,000. It's available through 9/30 of 23 or until fully expanded, whichever date falls first. The program will grant from $100 to a maximum of $1,000 plus crisis payments. And will allow a customer to catch up balances and arrears plus other late charges or penalties. As you know, the city does have an internal low-income program that qualifies an account up to one year of, uh, low-income rates. But it does require that the customer have a current account prior to approval. The two programs could complement each other by catching up old balances. Then allowing a low-income qualified resident to continue forward at a reduced monthly base rate. This new program would also complement the hopefully future ARPA program with Saint Vincent de Paul. By allowing those funds to be used for other needs while their city utility bill is also paid up. Through our utility staff, and we will also do this through the newsletter on our website, et cetera. We will educate residents of the program and refer them to Clackamas County for qualification. The county will forward qualified applicant's information to the state and the state would pay the city directly. The state has not determined the exact implementation date of this program yet, but is working diligently to start it as soon as possible. By signing this agreement, the city will be ready to provide information and referrals immediately once the program is finalized. So staff strongly recommends entering into this Contract of Water Assistance Program between the city, county and state agencies. To provide one more method of relief for our low-income qualified residents. Again, these will have some, uh, COVID implication requirements. But as I say, it should hopefully be a little bit more lenient. So with that, or is there any questions I can answer about this program?
All right, Counselor Ripley, questions?
I have no questions.
All right, Counsel Alexander.
No questions.
Counselor Todd.
No questions. I'm, I'm excited about this. I think this is gonna be good for a lot of people in the community.
Counsel Hartman.
No questions, thank you.
Counselor Garland.
Uh, no questions. I'm just gonna say what Counselor Todd said, that I agree with that. And, and, you know, if we can give relief to somebody who hasn't worked for a few months, yeah, awesome, let's go.
Right, Counsel Tracy.
No questions, thanks, Mayor.
All right, um, anything else from staff? At no, all right, would someone like a motion, would someone like to make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. Now, we enter into the contract for water assistance between the city as agency. Clackamas County Social Services as the vendor and the Oregon Housing and Community Services as the department to assist in qualification. Qualification of benefits to Gladstone low-income utility customers.
Second.
Motion was made by Counsel Alexander and seconded in tandem by Counsel Garland and Counselor Todd. Do we have any further discussion, questions, concerns? I don't see anything. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Garland.
Yes.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy. Counselor Hartman.
Hi.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, great. Please, look for other programs that are available. I know that you guys do. But there's definitely a lot of people in need right now. All right, next is item number 12, which is, uh, discussion regarding business from the audience. Where we used to ask for the speakers to give us their name and address and we're not doing that anymore. So this one was put on the agenda by Counsel Garland.
Well, I, I'll, I just was wondering why it doesn't happen anymore. There's been many times that people have come to talk to us about different items happening a- around and about the city. And although we're a small city, it does matter, um, when they're coming to us, if we would like to, you know, get back with them. Um, I, I, and I guess it was when I originally sent it out, I, I honestly thought I would probably get a reply back. That says, you know, like the forms that we used to fill out walking into city hall. That they would give that information to our clerk and that would be put into record. So that's a question also. Maybe that's already happening and this is a moot point. Um, there's the discussion opener.
Staff?
Yeah, I, and I think it's a good discussion to have. Um, what I noticed is, once COVID hit. And everybody scrambled to have their meetings on a different platform, which was Zoom. We no longer required them to, to fill out anything that stated their name and their address. When somebody signs up to speak now, we have their email address. Um, and that's what we have entered into the record and we can certainly put that back into place. I don't think there was any intent on why we stopped doing it. It's just Zoom kind of changed the way that people provide information. But if it's the city council's desire, we can still have people state their name and address for the record. Or maybe you want us to just have that on the email when they sign up to speak so that we have a record of that. We are very open to doing what the council desires.
Well, I know when we were doing public comments and planning commission, we had to have that address. Because if there's any pub, any, um, formal notice that needs to be sent out, we had to have an address, an email address didn't work. So is that something that comes into play here at all? Not really.
Not really. That's typically. Not really. That's typically for like a land use hearing, that if somebody wanted to have standing, you'd want to make sure they were in the City of Gladstone. But we have the ability to do it any way that the city council wants to, and, and we're happy to accommodate that if, like I said, you would like us to have that information for the record if we can, or if you want them to state that at a meeting.
Okay, Counselor Ripley?
I think it really needs to be stated at the meeting, because we were elected by citizens of Gladstone, and it's not that we don't want to hear any concerns or complaints from outside of Gladstone. We want to hear those, but we need to really be listening to the people in Gladstone. That's where our priority is.
Thank you. Counselor Alexander.
Oh, I think, I think anybody can speak to anything. That's, you know, everybody's right. It would just be probably better for us to have it on our record, so we know who did, and if we needed to reach back out to them, or if you wanted to speak again.
Okay. Counselor. Counselor Todd.
I could remember, Counselor Garlington, I remember that you had to write it down on the slip, but there, right before we transitioned into this new building, did you actually state it? Did you sit there and say your actual full address when you got up there? Because I don't recall that being the case for the last couple of years.
I have to go back and watch a meeting. I always told my address, but there wasn't anybody I think that didn't know it by the time.
Right, right, exactly. Where I live, but my concern is that everything's on YouTube now, and we were on YouTube before, but the format's different. And this is now beamed across the world to places unknown, and I don't know if people, I wouldn't want to give my address, even though everybody knows where I live. I don't think I'd want it to be everybody in the world. Maybe it's just you say your name from Gladstone, or maybe you just say, when you submit your, your information, other contact information besides email, because we are, our people, our citizens that are speaking are sending emails, so we have contact with them. I don't know.
I think it would be important, too, for the city attorney to spell out what legally we can and can't do with this item.
Thank you, City Administrator Bats. I just want to be clear, and I think this was alluded to a little bit earlier, is that we absolutely can ask individuals for their name and address. If someone does not want to provide that information, however, we cannot constitutionally require them to do so, because people have the constitutional right to petition the government anonymously. So, you know, I just want to be clear that, you know, in this context, while we can certainly ask, we cannot require it.
All right, Counselor Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. I mean, personally, to me, I, as someone who is new to local government, to me, asking for someone's address is somewhat of an equity barrier, regardless of what some of you may think. It is incredibly intimidating coming to the council and a mayor to speak, and I personally want to make our local government accessible and have these access points and increase our community engagement. And to have someone state their address, in the reality we live in right now, is incredibly dangerous, and it violates their sense of privacy. So, I personally don't think that we need to be asking where they live. I guess I'm comfortable saying I'm from Gladstone, but I don't think that, that we should have our residents state their address as we're gaining the trust of our citizens and our community members. It is a part of our Resolution eleven eighty-four that we will review our policies and our ordinances, and, and something like this does have impacts on traditionally marginalized communities coming forth and expressing their concern to their city council. So, I, I hope you all understand that, that it is a, an equity barrier to, to provide that information, and it is a a safety concern for some. So, I don't think that we need to be asking for that information.
All right, Counselor Garlington.
I hear what everybody's saying. I, I, you know, I would just, I guess, given that we have everybody's email address, I am, I, I have to agree wholeheartedly with Counselor Hartman that you know, people might feel inferior or something. I live in an apartment. I, you know, I, I get what she is saying, a hundred percent. So, I guess my next, I would like to know if somebody lives in Gladstone. That's all. That's all I'm asking. I live in Portland, and I'm coming here to talk to you about the fact that I would like a billboard on your, you know, on Portland Avenue. I'm coming from Gresham because I have a vested interest in a, a property or a business going in, you know, here. So, for, to ask your name, maybe the city you're coming from, and the topic you're going to discuss, I don't think that right there would be too much to ask. I don't know how many of you have changed your email addresses over the last, however, many years, but I get those updates continuously from people. So, especially in my workplace. So, I, I don't, I don't know that an email address is always the the way to go either. I'm, you know, I'm, like I said, I'm open for discussion with everybody. I'm, my apologies also that I'm a little bit foggy. I've been sick for four days, and my thoughts just aren't all together. I would like to see somebody state the fact they live in Gladstone when they talk. That's all. I'll lend it there.
All right, Counselor Tracy.
I, I don't have, really have much comment on this. I, I think I could go with Counselor Garlington's ask that you state you're from whatever city as you're addressing the council. But I, again, we listen to, we hear from a lot of folks, and there are folks who don't live in our city who are impacted by what the city council does. So, yeah, I'm, I'm really kind of neutral on this. I, I don't see a need for anybody to give their address.
All right, Counselor Ripley, you had your hand up?
Yeah, one of my thoughts, that it would eliminate some of this chaos that's going on, when we get all these people calling in to talk at a council meeting, giving us the impression they're calling in from Gladstone, but there are a bunch of friends who are put up to calling in to, to help, to help an agenda. And we need to, to make Gladstone more of an honest, reliable city, we need to know if what we're hearing is coming from a Gladstone resident or if it's coming from somewhere else.
Counselor Hartman.
Thank you. I just also wanted to add that, you know, we do have a lot of community members that have children that are in our school district, that work here, that don't live here, that, like Counselor Tracy was stating, that are impacted by the decisions that we do. They might not have a Gladstone address, but their kids are here five days a week for six hours. So, I just want to throw that out there, that we do have residents that might speak on behalf of their children or on behalf of themselves as they're here, working here. I just wanted to put that out there.
Counselor Todd.
Yeah, I think that's really important to keep in mind. Counselor Ripley and I have kids the same age, and, and when our kids were in school, you know, the kids lived in the district and, and you had a home here. For the last twelve years, you know, we, we've been having a system where you can apply to come to school here, and it's a lot more prevalent, and so there are a lot more people that live just right out of the district, you know, in that sort of island of Oak Grove that are literally just right down the street from us, who've chosen for the kids to go to school here. And so, I think it's important, there's people that have investments of property, that sort of thing. So, we, you know, it's, it's it's different than it has been historically. I, I don't know of anybody having friends calling in to push agendas, though, so I'm not really sure what that was about, but I, I think it's fair to say, if you want to say you're from Gladstone, cool, you know what I mean? I don't think that it needs to be that big of a, a deal. There's security issues that a lot of people are concerned about with giving any information out on a YouTube video like this.
Counselor Alexander.
Oh, I was just thinking, I, I agree with Counselor Hartman. Some people, I mean, I, I think a name, an email, and just your city. I don't think you need to put an address. That's pretty personal.
Okay. No address. All right, do we want to table this and discuss it at a further, further meeting, or do we want to make a motion? Well, actually, we're not, because we've got five people that want to speak. Tammy, are we okay to bring people on?
We're gonna give it a try.
Okay. So, do you want to go ahead and call the first person up, please?
So, the first is Sierra Cook.
And remind that you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you guys for taking my call. I wanted to just speak briefly and mention that I do have some concerns about requiring residents to publicly state addresses in order to get feedback to the council. My concerns are twofold. One, I'm concerned that asking for an address could lead to the exclusion or dismissal of feedback from community members who are not full-time residents of Gladstone. I agree with Counselor Todd and Counselor Hartman that, you know, there are people in the community who have a vested interest in what happens in Gladstone, but who may not reside here full-time, people who have children in the school district or who may own property in Gladstone. I think it's also important to recognize that our community is currently being targeted by the Proud Boys, which is an organization designated by the Southern Poverty Law Center as a hate group. Members of the Proud Boys have harassed members of our community by following them to their home, leaving messages in their mailbox, and in other instances, publishing, publishing their names, addresses, workplaces, children's names, and their children's schools on the internet as a form of harassment and intimidation. By requiring community members to disclose their address publicly, the city would be asking citizens to put themselves at significant personal risk in order to speak at council meetings. This would have the effect of either putting residents at risk or chilling public discourse as residents decide not to risk their safety to engage in the civic process. If there's concern about the risk of people who are not in the community overwhelming council meetings, I think there are alternate ways to do this. The council could vote to, to require community members who wish to speak to include in their request to speak their connection to the community. This would allow residents, parents of children in the district, and others who have ties to the area to still engage in the civic process while not asking residents to put themselves at risk. Whatever the council's decision, I would ask that you consider the risks of asking individuals to share their addresses publicly, as well as protecting the right of community members, some of whom may not be a resident of Gladstone, to be involved in civic life. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Could you call the next person up, please?
The next is Anne Jenkins.
Hello, my name is Anne Jenkins. My pronouns are she/her, and I live in Gladstone. Sierra stated her concerns very clearly, and I second her concerns as well. The council requesting an address would mean entering our personal information into the public record, whether in writing or orally, before providing comment to the council that represents us in the city in which we live, work, or go to school. This is now unnecessary, could pose a possible public safety, but personal safety risk, and is perceived by some in the community, including myself, as an intimidation tactic. This is not required for Clackamas County. This could be perceived to be about suppressing voices of opposition, because many people speaking out in opposition would not feel comfortable entering their address into public record in the current political environment within Gladstone. This is the exact wrong time to consider such a requirement and does not seek to build trust with constituents. A physical address should not be required to provide public comment to a council which represents the city constituents. Providing an email address to staff should be sufficient at this time when providing public comment and for council to reach back out with a response. I agree with Counselor Hartman in wanting local government to be accessible, and I am glad that this cannot be required per City Attorney Jacobs. As a note, I signed my email with my name and Gladstone resident, and I am glad to state the fact that I live in Gladstone when addressing the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
The next is Craig Combs.
Hello, City of Gladstone, City Council. I'm speaking to express my concerns about the proposal to consider requiring name and address when speaking during public comments. In the current heated political environment in Gladstone, with national hate group members such as Proud Boys in our community espousing racism, discrimination, and intimidation on our city streets, I would not feel safe publicly revealing my personal address in a public forum when speaking out against them. In documented cases, the Proud Boys and their affiliate groups act like gangs and have singled out citizens for harassment and targeted violence, resulting in fear, personal injury, property damage, or worse. And these hate groups are already doing this here in Gladstone as well. If this proposal moves forward, Gladstone community members would be forced to choose between speaking their truth at a city council meeting and potentially facing intimidation or violent reprisals at their own residence, or keeping silence in order to keep safe. Is this the intent of this proposal, to silence people from speaking out? I don't think so, but regardless of intent, this is what would be the result. Until these national hate groups leave our city for good, which can't happen soon enough, this proposal has the potential to expose ordinary Gladstone citizens to violence or intimidation just for speaking out at city council. In the interest of protecting free speech, and in the interest of keeping Gladstone citizens safe, I am strongly opposed to publicly requiring name and address when speaking during public comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
The next, I'm not sure if she's on here. If Mindy Prosky is on here, can you please raise your hand? Mindy Prosky is the next.
Hi, thank you so much for your time. And in the interest of time for all of the counselors present, I would just like to say that I agree with all of the other statements that have been made about requiring somebody to disclose their home address in order to speak at a council meeting. I think it's, it's fraught with danger, and I don't think it's really all that necessary. And I think that it's been made very clear that in order to participate in these council meetings, that simply giving your name, your email address, and your city would be more than appropriate for being able to speak, and, and I really hope that that is the way that this decision goes. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And Sam Henderson is the last.
And I do not see Sam on here. If Sam could raise his hand if he is on. Sam Henderson is coming on now.
Hello, I'm not Sam Henderson. I'm Alex Hernandez. I did receive a confirmation email that I'd be able to speak, so really briefly, I'd like to go on record to say that I also do not support, as a citizen of Gladstone, having to give your address in the political climate that is happening. I'm here today to speak like the others before me as a concerned citizen. I am a, I love Gladstone. I think it's a wonderful, beautiful community, but however, the growing presence of the Proud Boys in our community is very, very upsetting. The Proud Boys are classified and documented as a hate group, white nationalist, anti-Muslim, misogynistic extremist, neo-Nazi, anti-Semite militia, violent group. There is no place for them in our community. However, they've made it comfortable to gather here for the last three weeks, plus resulting in canceling of football jamborees, resulting of closing of businesses. Our neighboring communities of Milwaukee and Oregon City have both put ends to the gathering of this group. I ask that the city council do the same so that we can remain a model community of non-violence and no intolerance of hate or crime. This is not going to end up well if we turn a blind eye. I am deeply concerned about the safety of our community and request that a task force be formed and that the city council work in conjunction with. be formed and that the city council work in conjunction with the Gladstone Police Department. Thank you.
Okay, so in the future, when you're talking about a specific agenda item, we need to have you guys address that specific agenda item. This is from the audience. Pretty much everybody's talking about Proud Boys, so that would have probably been the more appropriate time. And Tammy, so we're not doing Sam Henderson? It's going to be Alex Hernandez? Who did you?
I, Alex had raised her hand, and I thought that was Sam Henderson, so I apologize for that.
Okay, so she was not approved to speak then?
Unless she is Alex.
Asseline?
Asseline, yes.
Okay, all right. So we've heard from citizens and we've heard from all of council. It sounds to me like people are okay with name, city, and topic, and of course, the email address would be included in the email to speak. Does that sound fair to everybody? And if so, would somebody make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Councillor Garlington made a motion to require.
I have a point of order, Mayor. What are we? What are we approving?
We are approving that when you want to speak during a council meeting, that we need to have your name, the city that you live in, and the topic that you are speaking on. Right now, it's just your name and topic. We're just adding the city.
Is this going to be a meeting process? I guess I need to ask the city administrator and the city attorney. Are we changing a process for meetings, for public meetings?
I believe the first question is that Chad needs to ask. I believe we cannot require that per the constitutional rights. I believe that if I'm understanding correctly, we can ask them, and if they want to provide it, they can, but they don't have to.
Yes.
So is this a procedural thing that we're changing? Because I was under the assumption, we don't really have a procedure now that we're on Zoom. Given that we used to have the cards where people would submit the cards with the information included.
Yes.
Do we need to do a procedural change, I guess is my question. It's one call, one point of work.
Well, I don't think we formally made change the procedure away from supplying all of that information when we went on to Zoom. We just stopped doing it.
But I would assume that that information would then be given through the email chain. So when somebody does sign up to speak, same way that they would have, what if they walked into the building and signed the yellow card, that they would provide that information that the yellow card required, or provide at least whatever information they chose to give us. I guess what I'm asking is, do we really need to do this? This doesn't even feel like housekeeping. I'm not sure we're changing anything because the procedure was already in place, or we abandoned the procedure when we went to Zoom.
So Jackie, since it was our original procedure that was just vacated because of Zoom, and now we're asking to go back to the original way, do we have to make a motion?
So it is a procedural change. If you look at the city council agenda, at the bottom of page one, it says, "The city council will also have business from the audience at the end of the meeting. To speak during this time, please email our city recorder prior to noon on September 14th, or whichever date the meeting is, with your topic of discussion." And so now we would be adding to include your city and your topic of discussion. That is the procedural change that we would be making going forward.
I'm sorry, that needed to be clarified because it really wasn't clarified, I think, going forward, so.
All right, so Councillor Garlington, you made a motion. Do you want to withdraw the motion?
I don't want to withdraw the motion, but I'd like to clarify it, your city of residence.
Okay, so you want your motion to be that when you submit your request to speak, we ask for a name, topic, and your city of residence.
Correct.
Okay, we can't require it, but we can request it. Correct. Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion was made by Councillor Garlington and seconded by Councillor Ripley. And now is the time for further discussion. Councillor Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick question for clarification. In our council rules under public comment, it only states that when going to testimony, when recognized by the mayor, then state his or her name for the record. Is this something that we also need to change now? Or because we can't legally force people to say that, does that just stay the same?
Probably what I would recommend, because right now we are operating under the executive order by the Governor 20-16 that allows us to do our meetings via a Zoom platform. If this is something that you permanently want to change, then I would recommend bringing back a resolution of the city council rules and amending them so that we are being consistent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and since we're probably going to be in COVID for a while longer, I don't think this is something that needs to be on the next agenda. Okay, any other questions, comments? Councillor Todd.
So it wasn't in the council rules to begin with. We just did it, so why are we going back and changing it? Just because we always did it before didn't mean that it was part of our procedure, right? I'm trying to understand. It was never in the council rules before that you had to say.
The council rules have not always been in place. The council rules are something that was put in via, through Tom Mercero. So it's not, the rule was always in play. I mean, we didn't really have council rules before then. It was just standard process.
Oh, okay, so like 2017 or something, so.
Yeah, fairly new.
Okay, so when we were back at the old city hall, pre-COVID, all that stuff, we were just doing it.
They were putting it on the card, yeah.
But it was never part of the rules then, so I'm not really sure why we.
Because we didn't really have rules. That was just the standard process. And then, like in planning commission, it was because we needed that information in case we needed to send out formal documents, keep people apprised, because not everybody had email.
I don't know. I'm concerned about adding something to our procedures and our council rules that our council is telling us that we cannot enforce. So I'm trying to even, I just don't know what I think.
Okay, Councillor Ripley.
Those papers we used to fill out in these emails when people requested to speak, are they public record? So if they put their name, their address, nobody's going to see it. Then they go on and give people their first and last name. So maybe having that stuff on the email they send out, but then when they go to talk, only speaking using their first name, because then you're not giving out your first and last name. I think there's other ways you can do it a lot safer. And if it's not public knowledge and all this stuff, then it shouldn't be that big of an issue. It's probably more of an issue asking them their name.
All right, well, we have a motion in a second to request that when they submit an email to speak during a council meeting that it has their name, their city of residence, and their topic. Right now, it's only their topic and their name. Any other questions? All right, Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Councillor Alexander.
Yes.
Councillor Tracy. Councillor Hartman.
Hi.
Councillor Todd.
Yes.
Councillor Garlington.
Yes.
Councillor Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stimple.
Yes. Thank you. All right, next item is number 13. There's nothing in your packet, and this is just discussion regarding the Halloween event on Portland Avenue. We had talked in a previous council meeting that Halloween was going to be the first actual city sanctioned, supported event that we were going to have because of COVID, but COVID is not going away. The Delta variant is rampant. So we just need to decide whether we want to still hold off, or do we want to have Halloween? I've got people asking me all the time. They feel that because this is an outdoor event and that people can certainly wear masks with their Halloween costumes, that it would be fine. The church that does the press cider every year wants to come back and help organize it. So we definitely have the people that are interested. But do you all feel comfortable having an outdoor event for Halloween? Councillor Ripley.
I think that decision really, for kids, it should be up to their parents. If their parents don't want it, then don't take them. If other parents don't have a problem with it, then they should both do that.
So you think we should go ahead and provide it, and if they want to come, they come. If they don't, they don't.
I think so, because then we could also have educational step on personal safety.
Yeah. Perfect. All right, Councillor Alexander.
Yeah, I don't know if it brings any liability on to the city if we sponsor it. Now, if we don't sponsor it, but we have it set up down, like the kids wear masks and, you know, to collect candy on Portland Avenue through the businesses and so forth. And, you know, they're supervised. That way they get to have fun, get the free candy. You know, and I just don't know if it's a good idea that the city actually sponsors it. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Jackie, do you want to respond to that?
Part of the reason why we brought this to you is because the city does typically sponsor this event. And anytime we get a special events license for an event that might be held on city property, we have been denying those because of the COVID. And now we've got the variant. And so I don't think, I think it is personal responsibility from a staff's perspective. We're not comfortable yet approving city-type events that's going to attract people and possibly attract a generation that hasn't been vaccinated. So we do agree that it should be a personal family's choice, and there's probably ways that you can still experience Halloween or Harvest, whichever you prefer to call it. But we wanted to make sure that we weren't making an executive decision without bringing the policymakers in regarding whether or not you wanted the city to go forward. Typically, it's been a full Portland Avenue street closure and have vendors and activities going on in the street. And from an emergency management perspective, we wanted to make sure you knew that staff was not comfortable approving those types of applications yet.
All right, Councillor Todd.
I'm not comfortable with the city sort of sponsoring anything specific. And, you know, kids are the ones that aren't vaccinated. They are going to school right now. They are wearing masks. I understand that. It just sort of feels like it's still something to where individual families could make their own fun and have their own parties and their own circles. And I don't know if we want to be involved with that at this point.
Right, Councillor Hartman.
Thank you. Administrator Bets, can you clarify, like, what the liability is? If we were to sponsor this, are there additional steps that the city is going to have to take, like fencing, controlled environments? Is there anything that we would be responsible for? Or are you saying that if the company, the mayor, was saying that usually does it, we just wouldn't approve of their events, even though they're providing the event permit?
So anytime the city sponsors an event, there's always a risk of liability if somebody was to get hurt, potentially if somebody got sick. We always have that risk on us, and that's why a lot of people look to government agencies and you see what is happening right now in the social world, that it's not good for the government to approve activities in a community when you're being encouraged actually to not try to have events where people are gathering. So if somebody wants to do something on their private property, of course, the government can't control that. And so what we're saying is that we're excited to get back to normal as well. We're just not comfortable yet launching that on the Halloween event. There would be a lot of additional questions if you wanted us to move forward on, would you require us to show proof of vaccination? If you do that, then we would have to get security or fencing or checkpoints in place, which increases the cost. So the first question was, do you want to move forwards with this? And if you said yes, then we would need to put a plan in place and present that to try to make this happen. If you all agree that the timing is not right this year and that it's up to parents and families to make that decision, then we would not move forward with the street closure application for the Halloween event.
Okay, so essentially, excuse me, like the church property can have an event because it's their own private event. The previous event permit we just approved for the Halloween party can have that, is approved by us because it's on private property. But if someone wants to do something on public property, that's when we have to, or the advice is to not approve that.
Yes, and we have another example of Fognaps wants to do an event on the nature site property, and again, that is city property. And so we're working through all the nuances of whether or not we should, just in general, allow events to be on city property, and staff is not comfortable yet allowing those to happen.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, this is obviously hard for me. I've got children of my own who would love to party it up on Portland Avenue. But if the staff's recommendation is that we do not move forward because of liability, just given the state that we're in, I'd have to unfortunately agree. And maybe we can find, someone can find a private property to do something. Yeah, it's a tough one. That's all.
Right, Councillor Garlington.
I have to agree with everyone. You know, bringing adults in and saying, you know, to show proof of vaccination, you know, I'm all about that. But we have a lot of vulnerable little kids that would potentially gather and then go back to school the following school day, whenever that should be, because I don't have that October 31st calendar right in front of me. And then you're opening them up to that potential of being in a place with 1,000 people in a very small area. And so I think that the fact that we have no way to make it bigger and make it far more spread out, I don't think it's a responsible thing to do.
Right, Councillor Tracy.
I'm going to agree with the other councillors. I think it's too early. Folks are going to be able to do this on their own, and I think you'll probably still see people up and down Portland Avenue, but it won't be a city sanctioned event, so. I'm in agreement with the other councillors.
All right, well, I want to remind a couple people that spent a day not long ago in Happy Valley at the first responder event. Councillor Hartman was there, Councillor Alexander was there, I was there. There was literally thousands of people in this field, most of them with no masks on, and it was sponsored by the city, and they had absolutely no problems. So I completely understand it, but I just don't want us to keep being so cautious that we're going to bubble wrap the city and not let them enjoy the little things that they can enjoy right now. But I've kept track of any spreading events at that Happy Valley first responder thing. None. None at all.
Then I would counter with, why didn't we just have the community festival this year then, Mayor? I didn't hear anybody raising their hand and saying that earlier, so.
We could have. That was canceled, and it was not, I mean, it's nothing that we had to make a decision on. All right, so I'm just going to do a consensus. Hold on, Councillor Alexander.
Yeah, well, so, yeah, my thing is, like, I guess with Councillor Ripley, if it's supervised, that's what I said right again, if the parents agree and it's supervised, and the people on Portland Avenue want to open up their businesses and hand out candy, and kids want to go up and down Portland Avenue, that, I mean, just as long as the city doesn't sponsor it, so there's no liability, they can sort of pretty much do whatever they want, right? So it's not like we're taking Halloween away from them. We're just not going to sponsor an event. Is that correct? Kids need to go trick or treat.
Pretty much. Yep, Councillor Hartman.
Just, I also want to clarify that that National Night Out at the Happy Valley was, in my personal belief, on, you know, it was August 3rd, and it was at the height of when we're feeling good. And COVID has increased exponentially over the past 30 days or 45 days since then. So I don't think that they're comparable. You know, I don't know that in August 3rd were we having 5,000 cases a day. So I think that there's a little bit of a difference in that, and I just needed to state that.
All right, all right, I'm going to just do a consensus. So the. So the consensus is, do you want to move forward with Halloween? Um, yes, obviously yes. No is no. Counsel Ripley.
I have a question. I have a question really quick.
Yes.
So I think we were, I heard two different things here. Are we looking for a sanctioned event from the city? Or are, for, are we talking about just letting the businesses do their thing? So you're asking, should the city back?
Yes.
An event?
Yes. Should we have, yes. Should we do the same kind of event that we've had in the past? That the city is the one that pulled it together? If the businesses want to do something individually, there's nothing there that we can control. It's if the city's involved.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Counsel Ripley.
You know, whether the, whether it's a city sanctioned event or not, the city could go and still put like some hand washing stations out and be a little proactive on this. We're not telling people not to do it. We're not telling people to do it, but we can provide some of the amenities that people will need out there.
So is that a no on the city event or a yes on the city event?
To me, as long as we don't take it away from people, I really don't care. I, I think the city needs to step up and start doing more stuff.
Okay.
Whether, whether we have to figure out how to do that. We, we don't know how long this is going to go on. So we need to be playing out, how are we going to attack these things and keep the kids involved and stuff?
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Alexander.
I think the community can still get involved at their own discretion. I mean, if the businesses want to open up and hand out candy and the parents want to take them and they want to wear masks.
No? Is that a no or yes?
Well, it's, it's, it's a, it's a.
It's a maybe.
It's a no that we don't want to sponsor it. The city doesn't, but it's a yes that let's have Halloween this year in Gladstone.
That's all I need.
There you go.
Yes or no? Counsel Todd.
Um, I, I don't want a city sponsored event.
Thank you. Counsel Hartman.
No city sponsored event.
All right. Counsel Garlington.
No city sponsored event.
Counsel Tracy.
Not this year. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. And I'm a yes, but we lost, so we are not doing Halloween this year. All right. Thank you for that. All right. Do we have any business carried forward?
I just have one logistical item for the city council. We have some healthy agendas coming up for our work session. You have September 28th work session. And I'm wondering if you would like to start at 5:30 instead of 6:30? Cause we have two topics that night.
Uh, probably a good idea. How does everybody think? Thumbs up. 5:30? 5:30? Counsel Todd, 5:30. Counsel Ripley, yes.
It's going to be close, but I'll make it happen.
And, and we will be conducting our work sessions in person at the council chamber. So thank you for that. That's all I have.
Okay. Um, business from the audiences next. So thank you to everyone that's going to be speaking here. And there's quite a few. Um, the public comment period is an essential part of our local government meeting. Each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes the input of our citizens into consideration. However, in order to comply with Oregon public meeting laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but instead a time for us to listen. Our city administrator and clerk are taking notes in case an item requires further action. Um, first cited person is Addie Smith. Is she on?
If Addie Smith is on, can you please raise your hand? Mayor, I do not see Addie Smith.
All right. Um, next is Sierra Cook.
Sierra Cook is now being moved over.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The past three Fridays, our city has seen individuals from outsider community plan events in our public spaces that pose a danger to Gladstone residents. Members of the Proud Boys have held flag waves on Arlington and Portland Avenue. These events have been advertised as family friendly events. And heck, it sounds family friendly. Who wouldn't support waving the American flag? But the individuals planning these events are using this patriotic language to cover much more concerning activity. For the last three Fridays, I stood across the street from the Proud Boys on Portland Avenue and I held a sign denouncing hate and I waved an American flag. I witnessed truly awful intimidating behavior and I'm concerned about this hate group targeting our city. On all three Fridays, I saw multiple individuals with the Proud Boys group flashing white power signs. On all three Fridays, I witnessed individuals yelling insults across the street, many of them specifically targeting queer people and women. These insults were so wild that I can't, I tried to think of a way that I could tell it to you in a safe way and that would not be inappropriate at a council meeting. And I don't even have a euphemism for some of the things I heard. One man waving a large flag with a four letter word on it screamed insults and threats, at one point threatening to beat, uh, a person who was standing next to me with a pole of the American flag that he was flying. I saw another individual yelling and calling one of my neighbors a four letter word while miming punching him over and over again. I've heard from one counselor that this counselor doesn't believe this group were Proud Boys. Um, I sent an email to city council, um, and, and Chief Schmarber, um, a few minutes ago with pictures of, um, individuals holding a Proud Boys sign and another individual flashing a white power sign in front of OG's on Portland Avenue. I want to appreciate Gladstone Police Department for their presence on all of the last three Fridays. They did a phenomenal job having a strong presence at this event and communicating really well with both sides. I'm grateful that the police had such a strong presence because these people are not just people on the other side. I believe in being able to disagree with your neighbor and still have a good relationship with them. But the message that these people are expressing isn't that they disagree with the school bond or they have a different position on an infrastructure bill. These people are opposed to democracy and to the basic humanity of black people, queer people, women. They engage in violence on a regular basis and they feel welcome here because we have welcomed them. The Proud Boys have been meeting at a local restaurant in Gladstone for at least a year and they're claiming now the sidewalk on our main cities, city streets as well. Multiple businesses on Portland Avenue have had to close their doors for safety during these demonstrations, losing revenue. I don't want to see Gladstone gain a reputation as a city that harbors hate groups. I'm grateful for the support of the police department in enforcing the peace these past few weeks. I'm asking the council to take action and ensuring that Gladstone remains a safe place for all of our residents.
Thank you. All right. Next is Craig Combs.
Craig is coming on now.
To the Gladstone City Council and good people of Gladstone, I'm extremely concerned about some national hate groups, the Proud Boys and their ilk, targeting our city. They've been kicked out of Oregon City and nearly everywhere else. And now they're feeling way too comfortable in our fair city of Gladstone. I've researched these groups. I've seen them around town and I've read about some of the group members and they operate like a typical street gang, trying to threaten and intimidate anyone that they don't agree with, which is a lot of America. Their beliefs are openly racist, are hateful, misogynistic, militaristic, against diversity, and in my opinion, are against what America really stands for. Yet they're the ones intent on waving the American flag. The values of Gladstone residents and the vast majority of American citizens are not reflected in these people. Regarding the flag waving protests on Portland Avenue, I am concerned that these are hurting our local businesses. The presence of these people is tense and threatening and the flag waving protesters are disrespectful and insulting to local residents. They are waving flags, but how patriotic is their behavior? I'm especially concerned that these flag waivers were recently carrying around a sign that had a photograph of a local minority business owner. A local minority, small business owner. And it was in sign, it was a sign intended to threaten, harass, intimidate and spread lies. These small businesses are barely surviving a pandemic and now they have to deal with flag waivers trying to drive off their customers? What does that say about our city? If they are successful, who will they target next? We as a city and community need to offer support and protection to our local businesses. Other Gladstone residents were targeted by these flag waivers as well. Again, the tactics of intimidation. In short, national hate groups like the Proud Boys and their ilk do not belong here. And these flag waving protests are hurting our businesses. Very few of these people actually live here and their hateful rhetoric and gang-like tactics spread fear and intimidation around our town. As a Gladstone citizen, I want the city council to denounce the president, the presence of the Proud Boys and other hate groups in our city and do it now. And I want the city council and Gladstone Police Department to respond to the community and let us know what is being done to address these hate groups that are targeting our city. As a Gladstone citizen, as Gladstone citizens, we need to take a stand against hate and intimidation, even when it's coming from underneath a supposedly patriotic waving American flag. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Um, next is Les Poole.
I took a sec there. You know, Les Poole, Gladstone resident. And I, I think that's a simple way for us all to announce ourselves. Um, and I'm an optimist. I think sometime in the future we'll have meetings that are live. And not everyone necessarily will be emailing in or has emails. So bottom line is that, um, I'm glad you had the discussion earlier, but you know, we got to keep things in perspective, folks. I can look up any of you on the internet. I can find you, anyone can find me. It's the world we live in. And, um, it just seems like we had an awful long discussion about that. Um, and I heard some exaggerated claims about how fearful we should be. Um, we should be fearful about a lot of things. But if we're afraid to state our name at a city council meeting, then, um, we're at, we're at the end of the line. And so I don't think most folks are afraid to state their name. Again, I'm Les Poole. I'm going to be turning in a report to the city with some deep concerns about how process, through my many years of involvement, how process, uh, occurs in Gladstone. Uh, there's been a lot of what I would call erratic processes. Uh, there's been a lot of, um, just repeated situations where selection of, of replacement counselors or replacement of, or, uh, of a planning commissioner or appointments to all of the advisory boards. Those processes have repeatedly been corrupted by Mayor Stempel. And it's very troubling because it's a clear attempt to control outcomes. And as someone who served on a planning commission for seven years, um, I can assure you that my recommendations will be that we make sure we don't have a continuation of the manipulation of processes, appointments and decisions in this community. Um, and you know, I, I'm not one to, I'm not one to, to call in and make anything up. But when I read Mayor Stempel's long-winded op ed in the Clackamas Review, um, it just compelled me to come forward. So I'm going to be turning in a, a report that I will include a request for action on. And, um, I imagine we'll hear that I'm attacking the mayor because that's the typical response whenever there's any criticism in this town. So I'm very troubled by what's, what's gone on and gone on and gone on. And right now, it's time for her to come clean. So I'm going to let, I'm going to let everything that I've indicated here be put on paper so that there's no confusion. And I can promise you that I will not go away because I'm standing up for an awful lot of victims and a lot of people that are unhappy with our mayor with good reason. Thank you.
All right. Next is Kelly Monahan.
Kelly, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you so much. This is Kelly Monahan. I live in Gladstone. Uh, I want to add my voice to the voices of folks who are very concerned about activity of Proud Boys and white supremacists here in Gladstone. Um, we came to the council last year regarding, um, anecdotal, uh, evidence of harassment of children of color in our schools. And it seems that things have just snowballed since then. Um, uh, the anti, the Gladstone anti racist Facebook group has been called a BLM terrorist cell. We've been identified as Antifa, um, and as threatening women and children. Um, I, I'm really tired of this. Uh, those of us who gather, um, on, uh, Portland Avenue to express our desire for peace and inclusion um, are just regular citizens. We aren't out there in body armor. We aren't out there with paint guns or bear spray. But that's what these folks, the flag waivers are claiming we are. And, um, I just find it really insulting, uh, that our mayor won't stand up for us and denounce these folks, um, who are intimidating our town. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Alex, and I don't want to get the last name wrong. Azelin.
And I'm not sure. I do not see that on there. I don't know if that was Alex Hernandez. But I do not see.
Okay. Next is Mindy Prosky.
Hi. Thank you again, uh, so much for your time, um, city council. Um, I'm not going to say anything any better than Sierra, Craig, um, Kelly, um, said before me. I am extremely concerned about the, what I consider the infiltration of the Proud Boys group, um, in my community. I, my family has lived in Gladstone since 1975. Um, I graduated from Gladstone High School in 1988. I now live here with my family. My son is going to the high school. My daughter is in the elementary school. This is my community. I am going to stand up for my community when I feel like there is a real threat. The Proud Boys are a real threat. They are making threats very blatantly. Our police department saw and heard these threats being made to our community members. I think it's really, really important that we come together as a united front against this hate group. And I really want to see our city council and I really want to see our police department come together and denounce this group. This is going to get out of hand if it is not cut off now. I feel very strongly about the potential for, um, violence. This is a violent group. The people that are standing up against this group are not a violent group. We are trying to come in peace. We are trying to come with inclusivity. Um, but we need some help. And so I would respectfully like to request the help of our city council and our police department. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Sam Henderson.
Uh, again, Mayor, I do not see Sam Henderson on here. Uh, if Sam is on here, please raise your hand. I do not see Sam Henderson. So next.
Jeremy Riddle.
Jeremy, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to thank the mayor, the city council and city staff and fellow citizens for allowing me to share this time with you. I'm speaking tonight first as a representative of the group of businesses from Gladstone's Portland Avenue and a couple nearby businesses in the neighborhood vicinity. All the business owners were invited and 16 of us got together today with the city administrator Jackie Betts and the Gladstone Police Department Lieutenant Tim Girkman at Max Patterson Park. And for a couple hours, we talked about the impacts that we were experiencing in regards to the Proud Boys being in downtown Gladstone on Friday evenings and there being activity in regards to that. It was a meeting that honestly hurt many of our hearts and was sometimes uncomfortable, but was a grounding stone to gather and listen to each other. We gained perspective in our diversity. Over 60% of our small businesses that were represented are owned and operated by minorities. This gained perspective, it built unity and a common sense of purpose. Many of us feel we are welcoming to all and truly appreciate when people choose to come and shop, dine and receive care with us. We recognize that people can go anywhere. We know we must use our expertise and, and ethically gathered materials and basically be socially conscious to get people, you know, into our stores and we want to build a sense of community. Our relationships that we build with the people who walk through the door, keep the idea of small businesses alive. All of the small businesses that came together today are owned by people just like you. None of us are rich or running the business as a hobby. I wish. We all live here in Gladstone. Most of us have completely put everything into opening up a business here. We've dedicated every cent, every moment away from our families and our hopes and dreams to making these businesses the best we can. We have hedged all of our bets on the success of our community. So we are in this with you. We've come together during common challenges that we've all experienced pandemics, wildfires and ice storms. The most connected thread all of us have in common, we discovered is that we're all neighbors. We live in Gladstone, we see you at the grocery store, the gas station, the community festival, the river, and here at the Zoom gathering event. We realized that to be truly neighbor, neighborly, it, it has the takeaway we came to. We committed ourselves as a group to communicate to everyone and to make sure we hold our actions to the bar of the golden rule as business owners. We committed ourselves to communicate to everyone this and we are committed to making sure everyone knows that they will be treated in our establishment the way we would want to be treated. We have committed to ensure all people feel welcomed and are treated with dignity and respect and feel heard. If we hear or observe behavior that is not in this vein, that makes another uncomfortable because of hate or ignorance, we will not allow it to continue. We will take the responsibility and ask that person to leave. We also acknowledge that we can always learn. We can become better people and there are different ways to look at things and we don't know everything. We just have some good ideas, we think sometimes. We've committed to living in the reality we want to be in, to be the change called for, to benefit all, to cause no harm. And say at the end of the day, we are people doing the best we can.
Time's up, Jeremy.
Oh.
Are you almost done? Is that what that timer is? That is the timer correct?
Um, may I have 20 more seconds?
Twenty, quick.
Um, all that is said, I, to change the hat, the next, yesterday, when I was in front of my shop, I was attacked by a Proud Boy. I was stalked for hours. He would drive by as I worked in my front window, trying to work on the garden display. And he screamed things from his motorcycle at me that were horrendous and horrific. And I think being a minority is the least interesting thing about me. And he didn't know who I was. They followed us home. We called the police. Gladstone PD came down to do searches by our house to make sure we were safe. But I was, I was attacked and I was very scared. And I just felt that people should know that that is not the narrative being introduced on the internet of what's happening in our town. These people are violent. They are dangerous and they will not stop until some of us are dead. And we want there to be, you know, peace in downtown. We want people to come shop. We don't want to lose our businesses. If we do, Gladstone for everybody will just be a place we all used to live. And that's all. I, I appreciate your time. I'm sorry.
Thank you for, for telling us what happened. Thank you. That shouldn't happen to anyone ever. Next is Michael Milch.
Michael, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, I guess I just did. And let me see if I can get my video going. Hi, Michael Milch, Gladstone resident. I want to thank the council for the meeting you had last week. Developing relational trust among yourselves is the council's responsibility and I'm glad you were continuing to work on it. Developing the trust of your constituents is equally important and that trust is rooted in transparency and accountability. One tool to help in that regard is the annual statement of economic interest, which elected officials are required to file with the state ethics commission each year of service. It is where you report businesses, household income sources, local real estate holdings and non-mortgage debt. These annual filings shed light on any possible conflicts of economic interest that can be barriers to ethical governance. The forms are filed electronically and most of us are just happy to submit them by the deadline to be done with it until the following year. They are searchable on the OEC website, but tonight I want to suggest that a council truly committed transparency and accountability will share the contents of their SEI filings openly with the public, perhaps annually at the first city council meeting in May after they're filed in April. The information disclosed is not that detailed or intrusive, no salaries or income figures are included. But they do provide information that if elaborated on just a little, can help assure the community that their council is acting in the public interest. I've read your 2021 SEI filing, so I'll give you some examples of what I mean. Back in 2017, we had three city council members who were related to Gladstone firefighters. And we learned how to separate the adoption of the fire department budget from the rest of the city budget. Mayor Stempel's SEI filing reports that her husband's fire department salary is part of their household income. And in presenting that report, she can declare her intent to recuse herself from voting on that department's budget as she's done each year. Counselor Todd's filing shows that her husband Gary owns a local landscaping business. Counselor Garland's filing shows that she works for a printing company. Counselor Ripley's shows that he works for a local construction and renovation company. In presenting their reports to the public, they can clarify whether any of the city's landscaping, printing or building renovation work is performed by the companies in which they have a financial interest, again, providing reassurance of ethical responsibility. Local residents have, who struggled financially during the pandemic can take some comfort in knowing that at least one counselor reported unemployment insurance as a major source of their 2020 income and can identify with the personal impact of the economic downturn. Being represented by someone who knows what you're going through is another source of trust in government. Counselor Todd reported owning a rental income property in Gladstone. And Counselor Tracy reported rentals in Oregon City. Mayor Stempel reported that she and Counselor Alexander are partners in an affordable housing business. With the council set to consider amendments to our housing code to encourage development of attainable housing to meet the needs of future population growth in Gladstone, it is helpful to have clear disclosure of financial interests or conflicts of interest that could influence the shape of the policies we develop and adopt. Transparency and accountability begin with open disclosure of our economic interests directly to the electorate. I encourage the city council to make their SEI filings easily available to the public and to be transparent in answering any questions about their content. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, last is Donna Diggs.
I think I have it here. Good evening, council. I am a very long time resident of Gladstone. We won't talk about how long. I'm speaking before you tonight to urge you to take a stand against the hate speech in Gladstone. As you know, the self-proclaimed flag waivers and Proud Boys have been illegally gathering in more than one location in Gladstone the last three Fridays. Have they actually had a permit required by Gladstone Ordinance 12 dot 22 dot 20? If so, why was a permit granted for this hate speech harassment and intimidation? If not, why were they allowed to gather? I've had a few personal encounters with this group, unfortunately, like many of you. Trying, then they were trying to harass and intimidate me and my family. Why are these people who don't even live in Gladstone allowed to assemble and harass and intimidate residents? I urge you to do what is right for the residents of Gladstone and not allow this hate group to continue to gather and harass and intimidate Gladstone residents. They are violating several municipal codes and I chose not to list those here. As are you, if you continue to allow these people to continue with their antics. This is putting a strain on our already limited police resources. On the Gladstone City Council website, it states, "The city council is committed to providing optimum level of services for Gladstone residents while minimizing costs imposed to taxpayers." This is currently not happening with the increased expense of police protection needed during these demonstrations. The safety of Gladstone residents is in your hands. You have the power and the duty to protect the residents of Gladstone. Please address this issue by requiring a permit application and then promptly denying their request due to their divisive hate speech harassment and intimidation of Gladstone residents. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. All right. Now it's business from the council. First, Counselor Ripley.
Well, first thanks for everybody who's calling in and, and making these comments. That's really important to us. But we also, you know, I've, I've read a lot of scientific papers and I've had to write scientific papers. And when you have these papers and you have a super biased opinion, it kind of discredits you. So one suggestion I will make, whether you're on one side of the street or other side of the street, one side of the street scaring people, but the other side of the street, that there were some people dressed with gas masks and all in black. That scares our kids when they look over and see this kind of stuff. So don't be point your finger on one side of the street or on the other side of the street because both sides are causing issues. And if you want to make it stop, it needs to stop on both sides. The other thing I want to say is I've been on a little rant about, about honesty, about people deceiving people. Everybody knows that I have a huge issue with our mayor. Everybody knows that I love our fire department, didn't want to see it go. So I'm going to continue to expose some stuff that people have been told that's not true, but I'm unlimited because I have something that'll feel funner for some people. One thing that's being said is with us losing all of our, of our volunteers is that now we have 24-hour duty officer coverage. The next time you hear that, ask why Gladstone can't take command of their own fires when we've always done that. But we say we have officer coverage, but we can't take command of our own fires. So start questioning people who, who tell you stuff. The other thing, and this is to you, Tammy, I know I told you I would not talk to you one-on-one, but I do not have your phone number and I would like to give you a call after this meeting tonight and discuss some other issues that I have started this week. So if you can text me your number, I will give you a call later tonight.
Absolutely.
Very much. That's all I got.
No problem.
And just to go back a little bit, I was going to tell everybody who knew about the relationship between you and me to sit down before I asked you to call me or just send me your number, but I forgot that. So anyway, I would, and that's all I want to talk about is the issue, nothing else, nothing between us.
That's okay. That's, yeah, I'd love to talk to you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next is Greg Alexander.
Yeah, my, I am very concerned also. Thanks for all the people who spoke in, as they all know, even the people that were speaking here tonight, they saw me there. I spent over an hour every week, all three weeks this has happened, I, I've come and talked to both sides. I'm trying to understand and get a better feel for what's going on. One of the people who talked said, one of the counselors didn't believe there were Proud Boys there. That was me the first week. But then as I talked and went to each one, on the third one, Lisa Halcom pointed them out across the street. She said, "See those vests, see those patches? Those are Proud Boys." I said, "Okay, all right." And then, and then I grant Counselor Ripley just said, "On this side, there were people with helmets, goggles, gas masks, umbrellas, all dressed in black." So I'm, I'm worried this is going to escalate and I know our businesses don't need it or want it. So I guess I'd ask Chad or Chief Schmerber was on here, what is, what are our options to make this go away? Can, can you?
Yes.
So, so I think what we need to do is I'll work with city administrator Betts and Chief Schmerber and have a discussion with them about various options. As everyone is well aware, there are some free speech limitations on, you know, what we can and can't do. But we are allowed to have various time, place and manner restrictions on how free speech activities occur in the city. And so, you know, I can certainly work with city administrator Betts and Chief Schmerber and figure out, you know, what we can do to make sure that these events do not continue to unduly interrupt the businesses as well as the community in general.
Okay, thank you. And then the last thing I have to say is a great job by the, by the police presence all three weeks. They did an outstanding job and I commend them for that. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Todd.
Thank you. Um, actually Counselor Alexander, that's what I wanted to ask also of council. So I'm glad that, that we're headed down that. I did bring this up about six months ago in an email, wondering what happens? What happens when, when a group moves and gets moved out of an area and maybe Gladstone's the next logical place down McLaughlin Boulevard? So I'm glad that we are talking about it, it needs to be talked about. It's the, the business owners that, that are down there, but you know, there's people that live in, in these areas too that are not able to move. I'm, I'm one of them. Counselor Alexander goes down there to, to talk, but there's neighbors, there's people and, and it's upsetting. I, I'm sure we all talk to people all day long about what can be done? What can we do to sort of stem this tide and sort of, you know, keep Gladstone a place that is free of hate? And/or headed down a place of free of hate. So that's what I would like to do. So there's that. So we'll talk about that very soon. And I just wanted to thank Gladstone Police Department. I had so much fun watching the crosswalk walking sting because these people were walking across Portland Avenue and how many people almost didn't stop? And it happens to me all the time and I, I hope that our drivers will be more aware. Our kids are in school, our, our, you know, seniors that can't cross the street quickly and they're crossing. So people pay attention. You have a sandwich board put up by the police department saying, "We're, we're going to send people walking across the street." And the amount of people that got warnings, I think they almost all got warnings, but I wanted to thank the police department for that. And I'm glad we're having this conversation. Thank you.
Counselor Hartman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a couple of things. It's a quick question I received at the playground before today. So administrative best, if you don't have the answer, it's totally fine, but I thought it was important. With the large amount of rain coming this weekend and the dry spell that we have been in, I was asked while at the playground if we would have sandbags available for pickup? They seem to have remembered that we have done that before a couple of years ago. So I don't know if that's a thing, but you don't have to answer now, but something to think about unless you do have the answer.
I'm meeting with the Public Works Director tomorrow and we can certainly talk about that, yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, there was just concern because it's been such a, a dry spell that that water is probably just going to sit right on top. Um, I wanted to let you all know that I have been in contact with ERCO, which is the immigrant and refugee community organization. And they are in desperate need of donations for incoming refugee families. I have spoken with a couple of business owners who are willing to be a donation site, but I was wondering if we were able to utilize the senior center as a donation site as well. I, it would only be for a timeframe of 14 days. And at that 14th day, it would be picked up and taken back to, to their site to be given to the families. I have all the information and all of the needs. I don't know if we can decide now or get consensus now or if we have to do that later, administrative bets.
Is it food or clothing or what kind of donations?
So there are various like types of donations you can do. There's like different types of kitchen kits, there's clothes kits, there's like, you know, diapers and that sort of thing. So we can definitely pare it down to our community on what we can receive. And they did say if it gets to be overwhelming at any other sites that they And they did say if it gets to be overwhelming at any other sites that they can come pick up ahead of time. Um, but it just would be for a short amount of time. And I can email you guys all the the documents that they sent over to me.
That could be best.
Okay. Um, with that being said, another thing that has been on my mind is getting, and I don't know like with the timeline of what we would do, just because this is my first year, but talking about emergency preparedness for the winter and sort of getting that on the schedule so that we're ahead of the game. I have been hearing a lot of talks that this winter is going to be rough. And I know it's one of the mayor's main points is emergency preparedness. And so I didn't know if that was on the agenda to talk about before it happens, just to get the community ready. Go out and buy your coats now. Go buy your propane now. Don't wait till the last minute. But if we could maybe talk about that and just see if we have a have a plan. The other thing is to remind you all that next month is Indigenous Day. It's the first time we will be celebrating this. I personally have been in contact with the Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron, and they have been able to provide me with some pre colonial history that we can share with our community as well. I, along with several others, have been diligently working on an intentional and thoughtful land acknowledgement with the Clackamas County, including collaboration from all the surrounding tribes. And I will have the honor to read this land acknowledgement for Clackamas County on October 12th. And I just wanted to let you all know that it's a very important day for natives around the world and around the country to finally honor our beautiful culture and tradition. And then two more things. Um, in response to Counselor Alexander's ask for suggestions last week, I did not get much from the community other than just follow our council rules. I did hear from another counselor from another city that I thought was is interesting, just a statement of correct each other in private, defend each other in public, and keep your personal issues out of the paper. Thought that was a good slogan. That was my suggestion. Um, I am going to respond to everyone. Thank you, everyone for signing up today to talk about the issues that we've had. I myself tossed around whether or not to make my own statement because the things that they are saying are true. And are there different narratives? Absolutely. I am, I do, it should come to no surprise what my position is on this. I myself have been targeted. I myself have been followed. I myself have been doxxed. And like many other people, I am terrified for my children's safety, for my own safety. This is a real thing. This is a real problem in our community. And I want to apologize to Mr. Riddle for his experience. And thank you for sharing your pain with us in public. That is not something that's easy to do. This happens to so many of our community members over the past month. It would shock you. And those community members are comfortable with telling me those things. But it happens. It's here. And to provide a little bit of additional perspective to Counselor Alexander and Counselor Ripley. I understand that we saw the people in black block with their gas masks. They were there last Friday because it has been a bunch of moms and a bunch of cheerleaders and a bunch of rainbows and unicorns for the past two weeks. And what I'm understanding from those that I spoke to at the the counter protest, if you want to call it that. This group of folks were nervous for them because they have no idea what the Proud Boys are capable of. I have been personally bear maced by a Proud Boy. And so these things are real, and I understand that there are two different sides to every story. I get that. But these people pose a threat to our community. And it's not lies, and it is here. And I I wish that we could take a stance and just say together that we don't want them here and plain and simple, and that's it. And so I just wanted to say that I hope you guys can consider that there's that. I have to say, Counselor Alexander, I appreciate you coming down each weekend and talking to both sides. I want you to know that it is such a great privilege to be able to walk to the other side and feel comfortable. And so if there's anything you can do for our community, it is to tell those Proud Boys that you feel comfortable talking to to stop following our citizens, stop leaving notes in our mailboxes that we're that we're being watched and stop leaving business cards. Stop putting stickers up around our high school. Maybe they'll listen to you. I don't know. But that is all. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Garlington.
Hi, so I I'm I too am saddened that anyone doesn't feel safe and in our community and that they feel like they have to hide in their home or hide in their car because they can't get out of their car because they're fearful of being followed. Nobody should ever have that anywhere. And I'd like to think that our Gladstone police presence has helped possibly with some of that for people. And I would, I would like to say that I go on the record for saying that our continued support of our police department in their help with this piece is something I will always do because nobody should ever be afraid in their own home. So with that being said, I have a couple of meetings I went to. And for the sake of the people who are at the meetings and working hard at those meetings, I'd like to share with you what I found at the meetings. So the library task force met. And I will have to say that I was a little disheartened in that the library, the people that are running the task forces, not Oak Lodge, not Gladstone, the the upper parts of it are kind of asking us to lower what we're doing based on the fact that there have been rising costs in materials. There's a lot of a lot more discussion to be heard. But I want you to know that that's there. And I'm a little concerned with it. So I will continue to bring any updates I can. But I do know that the task force for Oak Lodge has not met yet, only Gladstone. Gladstone is continuing to move forward to get our library moving. Just going to keep an eye on this one a lot. So the other meeting I went to was the the Clackamas County Advisory Board, which is the new library board formed from Oak Lodge and from Gladstone with some unincorporated advisors as well, board members as well. This is a great group of people. They've all they all come with their homework done and they've got, you know, they're checking off the boxes and they're really getting things done. So they had all of course chimed in on the task force meeting. That and the fact that the Concord property has not had their meeting. As of Labor Day, the fines at the library have been brought back. So if you're not getting your movies back and you're not getting your library books back, you're going to get fines now. They're doing that. And then they're doing this new software. They've implemented some new software that they're tracking equity and inclusion materials and how much they're being used a little bit more. So I forgot to write down whether or not that's, I know that's something they're doing, whether they've started it or not. I'm not sure that the software is in place. But they were doing that. And I was, I was really glad to see that because I think that that also talks a lot about when our children are checking out books from the library on different cultures, different things that are happening, different things, different ways of life. That's really good. Kids are learning. They're learning from a library book and materials that are there for them to soak it all in, learn it all up, and hopefully be better people than those that went before them, you know? Good for them. And also one more thing. When we turned in our sheets for what we did, I accidentally wrote in there that there was a senior center meeting. It was a library meeting. My apologies. I will correct it next month. That's all I have to say. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you, Counselor Tracy.
I want to thank the citizens for coming forward and speaking on this issue. I understand the stress and the intimidation that they feel. Honestly, you know, we're going to have to talk about it. I do appreciate the Gladstone Police Department, but I also appreciate the other departments and the interagency support that they gave us. Everybody else has pretty much spoken and said everything I would have said. So thank you.
All right, I always have a couple of things. Yes, I took last month off, but I still have more stuff. Um, food pantry is now open and we are back to a shopping pantry. So people can come in and actually shop like their grocery store. We don't have as much as a grocery store, but we do have a lot. We've hired Alex Ben Peltback as our director, and she's taken it back to to the wonderful group of people that it used to be. So we're really, really excited. The pantry is open now on Thursdays from three to six P M. And it's still in the portables at the Hillside Christian Fellowship Church off of Glen Echo. We're always looking for volunteers and we're now starting to be able to accept donations without having to put it into COVID lockdown for 72 hours. So if you know of anybody that has stuff to donate, great, we're doing a lot of school supplies now, but definitely lots of food. Last night at the Parks Board meeting, they discussed the Meldrum Bar Site Plan, which had its kickoff meeting, I believe it was today. Darren presented a list of projects that came from the board's park tours and an update on the wayfinding signs. They discussed the Ridge Gate property and that it was originally designated as the David M. Scott Family Park. And the board would like to continue with that name. They talked about a letter from Fognap regarding the need for parking and water, as well as moving the existing berm to the actual property line since that adjacent house is for sale. There were presentations on the Reneerson Wetlands Restoration Project, as well as the Olson Wetlands Potential Next Steps. The board is going to recommend adopting a site plan for the Olson Wetlands be moved up on the priority list because North Clackamas Watersheds Council is kind of spearheading that project, and they have a bunch of opportunities for grants coming up. And we would need to support it in order for them to be able to move forward on the applications. Lisa and Bill Preble gave an update on the pickleball court renovation, and the painting should be done by the end of next week because the entire painting crew came down with COVID. So that kind of delayed it a little bit. Clackamas County Coordinating Committee's main focus was transit options that we have in our county. I was shocked to hear that we actually have eight small transit departments in Clackamas County because TriMet can't service us like they should. So we also have a lot of lift and pair transit options here. As I've stated in the past, there's a lot of really bad information being pushed out via social media. Please go to credible sources when needing accurate information. It's getting more than a little frustrating feeling questions based solely on someone's opinion, even though it's stated as fact. And I'm talking about COVID stuff. It's amazing to me how many home remedies people are calling about that they can do to cure COVID or stop it from happening. I heard that now dogs are the big spreaders of COVID. So should we all get rid of our dogs? You know, it's just, I don't know where this information comes from, but somebody's putting it out there. So please go to CDC, Oregon Health Authority, Clackamas County, federal COVID sites, and our websites for up to date information. I definitely want to thank the pickleball folks for taking on and funding that rehab. It looks fantastic. And apparently it was done on budget, on time, other than the COVID glitch. And they put a ton of energy into it. It's great. Lastly, I want to apologize for missing the last scheduled city council meeting. I had every intention of coming, but my father was dying and I needed to be there, and it just so happened that he passed away during the meeting. So thank you for not writing me for not being at the meeting. It was really important that I be there with my family. So and thank you to staff for giving me space and support during that. I appreciate it. So that's all I have. Would somebody like to adjourn the meeting, make a motion? Yes, Counselor Alexander.
Yeah, so I had I asked, I asked a question today on the check registry when I, when I met with Jackie and I I forgot to ask one question. So I just wanted to get a clarification on the Vintec International, the parking kiosk warranty that we pay. Is that monthly or is that a one time fee?
I believe it is an annual fee, Counselor, but I need to confirm that with you.
No, that's all. I just forgot to ask. Yeah, you explained it to me. I just didn't know if that was a monthly and annual, you know, one time. So that's that's all I wanted to know. Sorry. Thanks.
All right. Would someone make a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion was made by Counselor Hartman, seconded by Counselor Alexander to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? All right, Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Garlington.
Uh, good night. Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Good night, yes.
Counselor Hartman. Yes. Counselor Tracy.
Please.
Counselor Alexander.
Of course.
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Mayor Stempel.
Yes, long meeting adjourned at nine twenty eight P M. Thank you, everybody.